I'm going to call to order the October 16th meeting of the West Sacramento City Council, the Redevelopment Successor Agency, and the Financing Authority. We're going to begin tonight as we do each week with the Pledge of Allegiance. So I'd like to invite our guests to join the council and staff in the pledge, which tonight's going to be led by Jesse Salinas.
Ready to begin? The Pledge of Allegiance is to defy the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia stands on a nation under God and is peaceful with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, the council did meet in closed session this evening to confer with our real property negotiator regarding negotiations with Mark Friedman-Gurgit-Tour and Randy Cost regarding the properties listed in the agenda, and also negotiations with PG&E regarding PG&E transmission lines in Yolo County. Also, and no action was taken, to confer with our legal counsel regarding the October 10th, 2018 letter from Scott Rafferty. No action was taken. And the public employment v...I'm sorry, the city manager evaluation, and no action was taken on that item either. Alright, so with that, we're going to proceed to Item 1A, which is presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the city council. As is noted on our agenda, state law prohibits the council from having a discussion or taking action on items that are brought up under Item 1A, but it is an important opportunity for a public forum. Would you ask that anyone wishing to address the council on this or any other item this evening to please fill out one of the yellow cards that is near the front door, near Mr. Drozd, and turn it in to the city clerk? In front of the clerk is a timer that we use to make sure that everyone gets a chance to be heard, and to that end, we ask that all comments be limited to no more than three minutes. Also in front of the clerk is a flip chart that simply indicates which agenda item the council's currently considering. The clerk takes the yellow cards all the way up to the conclusion of the staff report on any particular agenda item. Once the staff report is complete and the council questions and discussion or the public testimony have begun, she doesn't accept any additional cards, so if you're here for a specific agenda item, please be sure to try to get the card in before the conclusion of the staff report. We also recognize that for some folks, other than Jesse Salinas, public speaking can cause anxiety, hives, and other medical conditions, so we do ask that there not be any boos or cat calls or even any applause or other demonstrations, and we try to maintain a civil discourse here in the chambers. So with that, we have one request to speak under Item 1A, and it's by Michael Bisch.
Good evening, Michael Bisch, Executive Director of Yolo Food Bank. My hives are acting up this evening, so please go easy on me. Great news to share with you this evening. So last week, we had our first pickup from Tony's Fine Foods, 10,000 pounds to feed the residents of West Sacramento and elsewhere in Yolo County, and that's going to be a weekly pickup. What's particularly gratifying about that is previously, all of that food was going out of county, so residents of other counties previously benefited from those food donations, and from now on, it will be the residents of Yolo County from those food donations. The other great bit of news is we had our...we hosted our inaugural food donor appreciation event. It's an annual event. We had the first one last week, and so we had farmers, we had food processors, we had food distributors, and we had grocers at the event. There was about 100 of them, and the whole point of the event was to show the community's gratitude for these wonderful donations and the benefits that we're deriving from them, but also to inspire them to double down on their annual donations of food and to encourage their colleagues, who are currently not food donors, to participate in food donation programs and to partner with the food bank. So now I'd like to pick up where my colleague Emma from the last meeting left off. "We have shared a mountain of evidence with you regarding the alarming levels of poverty and food insecurity in the capital region in Yolo County and the West Sacramento community. According to the data, there is no greater socioeconomic challenge to this community, none impacting more lives than this issue. This is a daily crisis impacting tens of thousands here in West Sacramento and elsewhere in Yolo County. However, there is light at the end of the tunnel. Thirty-one percent of the food available for human consumption in the U.S. goes to landfills. Even more is tilled under. Rescuing this wasted food is a quadruple win. It's good for the economy, it's good for our community, it's good for the environment, and for our vulnerable neighbors. This requires a concerted effort and sustained partnership between local government, the business sector, farmers, and the nonprofit sector. You will find no stronger partner than Yolo Food Bank. Together, we can make this happen. Can we count on you? Thank you."
Thank you, Michael.
Good luck, Mitch.
Alright, that's all the requests we have under Item 1A, so we're going to proceed to Item 1B. And let me note that Councilmember Sandine is not here this evening because she is the council's delegate to the League of California Cities, and so she's at the annual meeting of the league, where this afternoon, the city of West Sacramento was honored at the afternoon at the league's most prestigious annual award with the Helen Putnam Award for Excellence, and the city received that award for our work with West Sacramento On Demand with VIA. And so Councilmembers Sandine and Sarah Strand, the project manager on that project, and Treasurer Azvedo, former summer steps intern, are all at the conference this afternoon receiving the award and celebrating this evening with their colleagues from throughout the state. There are 2,000 city officials at this event, so it's a very big recognition inside the community and the family of cities around innovations that make a real difference in citizens' lives and that have potential replicability for other communities across the state. So Councilmember Sandine could not be here this evening because she needed to be there for the award, and I know Councilmember Guerrero's also been attending that conference, and will be returning to it tomorrow as well. Alright, so Council Communications, are there reports of the communications? Councilmember Guerrero?
Yes, just wanted to say that, yes, I was earlier there today at the California League of Cities Annual Conference, where I also will return back tomorrow. I was at the Sacramento Valley Division meeting, where they thanked the outgoing President Joan Smith-Freeman and welcomed the new board members, President Tom Stollard, First Vice President Jeff Slowey, Second Vice President Jesse Lauren, and Secretary Gloria Partita, and the State League Director Randall Stone. In addition, we discussed the benefits of the newly organized Rural City Information Exchange Group, which they will identify key issues in the Sacramento Valley region that they will bring and present to the League of Cities and work on legislative and city...sorry, conference programming issues. And tomorrow, we will have our first meeting, and they are looking for representation, so we were all encouraged to attend, and there were about 80 members at the meeting today. In addition, at the morning meeting, the mayors and city council meeting, we received a presentation by CalPERS Board Member and Palm Springs City Council Member Lisa Middleton. It was very informative about the CalPERS program, and it seems like there is an interest to lower the unfunded liability with some controversial options, such as applying the 2013 Pepper to all CalPERS participants. She encouraged CalPERS members to pay attention as they receive an election ballot to vote on CalPERS board members, and that concludes my report.
Alright, thank you. Senator LaDesa.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Couple things to report on, first of all, on a fun note, thanks to our Parks Department for putting on a great Arts in the Hearts program on Saturday, and allowing me to, once again, have the high-pressure job of judging some of the art contests that were going on there, but it was all a fun. The community came out, big attendance, so thank you all for the work there, and thanks to the community for all your participation. This past Monday represented us at the YCTD Transportation District Meeting in Woodland. A couple things of note, one is have been assigned to the Yolo 80 Corridor Improvement Project. This is a project run by Caltrans, which gives me some hope, that we're looking for solutions how to improve mobility, multimodal mobility along the I-80 corridor through Yolo County all the way to our...into our city. It's a huge project, I think we all understand the bottleneck that it currently is. The region is obviously screaming for help on this, so I'll be representing us as part of YCTD, as part of this group, to be part of that improvement project. In addition, we did have a couple of other things of note, namely, we had a presentation on the state of transit mobility from CACOC CEO James Corliss. This is part of our...the districts, as we heard last time, we had an update on the Comprehensive Operational Analysis. We're also, Monday, we'll be going through a strategic priority session, and so James was kind enough to come out to the meeting and give the district board members a really good background on the current state of mobility and transit, a forward-looking one about the challenges that all transit districts face and all public agencies face as they deal with growing trends in mobility. So it was a very good discussion that we had that set the tone, again, for a meeting on Monday. In addition, we did get an update on the COA, we started to get some preliminary data in, and we'll be sharing that out in the first quarter. And also got an update on the...as you may be aware, we are participating in a electric bus experiment, and the buses are now being moved about towards us, and that would be the UC Davis, from UC Davis to UC Med Center, that would be on the electric bus, and it's a huge, from Electrify America grant we received to test this out. It's going to be a really good opportunity for us to test the technology of the future. So that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Mayor Potem Roscoe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just briefly, we met with the Regional Sanitation Board of Directors, received an update on the Echo Water Project, which we receive periodically, and we did get some project updates and progress and upcoming major activities. Everything is working well on schedule, and without...what's bearing you, the details, the quarterly report was received well by the Board of Directors. We also received a report on the Confluence Regional Partnership Program, its annual report for fiscal year '18 and '19, and learned about several programs, including one that we all know, the Sewer Lifeline Rate Assistance. We've dedicated money to several programs, including that one, environmental stewardship in, not only in the American River Parkway, but also septic tank conversions, and we discussed that, I think, a couple meetings ago. I did recommend to the board that they work with City of West Sacramento to consider potential projects here in our city, considering that there are some property owners that still are in need of a septic tank conversion and might be interested. At this juncture, all of the projects that they have are in Sacramento County, and so I wanted to kind of put a spotlight over in West Sacramento in case we have a critical mass of property owners who might be interested in engaging and benefiting the program. In addition, they talked about public education programs and did mention that on that board, I often say, well, when we're identifying public education programs, Regional Center engages in, it's oftentimes programs in El Grove Unified School District and/or districts that are not represented in Yolo County. And so I did ask last year, well, what are we doing to make sure that kids in our Washington Unified are represented in the programming? And that was on the radar and mentioned also. Finally, the board created an advisory committee to review proposed modifications to a master interagency agreement and review findings of the staffing and support systems, excuse me, support services study and district merger study. As many know, Regional Sanitation began providing wastewater conveyance and treatment to the City of West Sacramento back in 2007 under a separate contract, and the ultimate goal was to have the City of West Sacramento become a signatory to the MIA at a next update. At this juncture, they created an advisory committee with folks on the Board of Directors, and I volunteered, along with County Supervisor Oscar Viegas, to participate in that group, and we will be meeting over the next six months to provide feedback and discuss upcoming changes.
Terrific, thank you. Just a couple of quick reports. Congresswoman Metzui hosted here at City Hall a session with the Yolo Chapter, Moms Demand Action, and also Every Town USA around strategies to combat gun violence and availability of guns in our own community and throughout the region, and I participated on the city's behalf. And then the National Leadership Meeting for the U.S. Conference of Mayors was in Rochester Hills, Michigan, a week and a half ago, and I've been reappointed as Chair of the Educational Workforce for the Conference of Mayors, and so participated in that session. The Mayor of Chicago chairs the Criminal and Social Justice Committee, and the Mayor of Atlanta, Community Development and Housing, and we held a joint meeting on, excuse me, on opportunity zones and their implications for jobs, housing, and social justice. And I think there is unsurprising discontent with the state of the opportunity zone implementation across the country, and by implementation, it's...nobody makes, nobody implements it per se in a direct way out of government, but as the council's aware, these are tax benefits to favorable treatment of capital gains for investors in opportunity zones, of which we have four in West Sacramento, right? And they're parts of the country that have the highest rates of poverty, and so the intention of the opportunity zone tax treatment is in order to drive investment in those areas, but investment that will lead to lifting people up economically and through employment and through housing and other opportunities. And the evidence is not very good so far. There's no guidance about...there's no limits or strong contours around how the zones get...about what investments get made where. The city plays no role in making decisions or setting priorities, and most of the evidence is that most of the investments that are occurring are for projects that might have been invested in any way, and most of them are in areas that have such high rates of return that it's simply adding to the inequalities. So rather than projects occurring in, at the scale that was hoped for in places like here or across the river, you can still...you can always make a higher rate of return in Oakland or in San Francisco, and they have opportunity zones in those cities, and this is a problem across the country. So we're at the Conference of Mayors, we've been looking at both legislative but principally regulatory solutions. We've been meeting with the Secretary of the Treasury every two or three months to try to get the guidance just a bit clearer in order to create less incentive to invest in things that already were happening, and in more gentrification in the most expensive areas, and to promote more of the investments, not just in land development, but also in business creation and entrepreneurship. So we've been building on some strategies at the Conference of Mayors in that space. Just as a corollary, the governor, no action got taken this year on conforming the state tax code on opportunity zones, partly for the same reason, and the governor, the governor would like the opportunity zone tax credits in California to be much more targeted towards affordable housing and to green jobs and the green economy, and so the state is not yet replicating that incentive. So that was one strand. Another strand, we also did a lot of work with the, led by the mayors of Dayton, Ohio, and El Paso, Texas, on the gun legislation that's pending, both in Congress and in several states, because in Ohio in particular, it's been the leadership of the mayors, but also at the U.S. Senate. There aren't that many Republican mayors left in America, but there are still quite a few. In fact, our president right now is a Republican from Michigan. They have been swarming the floor of the U.S. Senate to try to move some of the legislation that the House has passed, and with some success. So we spent a fair amount of time at this meeting on that topic as well. And then finally, we toured, I think what was described is the plant that produces more robots than any other place in the entire country. It's a Fanuc. Fanuc is, I think, a Japanese company, and their largest plant in the United States is in Rochester Hills, Michigan, but, and it's an example of the sort of plant that it produces robots, but it also doesn't have very many employees there in the first place. A lot of robots, making robots, and so it's a window into the new economy, the new workforce or not workforce, the new tax problems that places and states are facing. It was as impressive as the local mayor wanted it to be, but also as troubling around some of these longer trends that I think many of the rest of us were concerned about. So useful meeting in that space. And then just one other reminder is that on October 30th is the regional forum, the CACOC Regional Forum, I'm not sure if I remember the council yet, has been able to register that wants to attend, but it's looking to be a good program as well. So, alright, so that brings us to Item 1C, Appointments to Boards and Commissions. We don't have any tonight, so we're going to proceed to Item 2, which is a presentation by the Yolo County Register of Voters on the upcoming Yolo Fest event. Mr. Salinas, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Cabaldin, and Councilmember Jesse Salinas. It's a really exciting night tonight because I get to share with you some outstanding news. Our Youth Empowerment Summit, and some of you have had an opportunity to participate in it, so hold on. in it, so hold on. We're trying to build leaders and champions for our democracy, so that people get engaged and make our community better. This is going to be a day that's going to start to transform not only your lives, but the community and your schools and everything in Yolo County. So thank you for joining us on this first day. We're excited to have you.
I think it's really good for youth to kind of get a taste of sort of lawmaking and kind of working with elected officials, and just kind of seeing how the process of democracy works, kind of firsthand. I think that's really, a really powerful message for a lot of us.
Students, sit up! Help! Sit up! Help! Leaders! Press it! Leaders! Press it! All right.
And learner participation is the key to active civic engagement.
So if someone can't pay for that, it should just be provided, by the way you are, who you are. You shouldn't have to say in separate words.
My school's not really prepared if that was like really happening, like it was happening through the COVID, because I should have been there.
Seriously, so many kids are joking about it, and I could claim that as hell.
By this, as people who are our age, we're going to have to live for 15, 60, 70 years in this environment where resources are running out, where we're not going to have enough water, where we're not going to be able to eat, where there's going to be a lot more disease. And so student involvement is so important.
Definitely heard that officials value our opinions, that we have a voice. I got a business card from the lady who wants me to email her about issues.
And what I took out from this event is using your voice to demand change and demand action, and that your voice matters, and that your voice can help your community and help people around you.
I learned that the elected officials have the same opinions we and our peers do, and they really do care about what we have to say and how we feel about what's going on in our community.
So you can hear some of those young people talking and sharing their message, and that was just, as those of you who have an opportunity to share that, it's what the experience was like for them. And we have actually a more extensive video on our website, yolosesayes.com, that's a little bit more detailed if you'd like to look at it another time. But what we wanted to be able to do, and I wanted to share with you today, is that as much as some people don't think it's happening, we do have nation-states that are trying to undermine our democracy, and they're trying to make us believe that democracy doesn't work, and that our government doesn't work. And there's things that are happening, and yes, it is taking place, but the one thing that we can fight back with is what's happening locally, is that we can start to celebrate our democracy. And so with that in mind, there's two things that I wanted to share with you. One is this event that we're having, that you have in your packet called Yolo Fest. The event is coming Sunday from 2:00 to 6:00 PM at the Davis Oddfellow's Hall, and that's at 415 Second Street, Darnan Davis. And again, from 2:00 to 6:00, it'll be free. There'll be food, hamburgers, hot dogs. Actually, we're going to even have some tri-tip in there if you get there early enough. And we're going to have prizes, we're going to have an engagement for our young people, and we're going to have music upstairs, and downstairs will be the food. And we have actually a piece of this that I've actually talked to the city manager about, and a piece of the element of this program, in addition to encouraging and educating people about what our program is, we want to encourage civic engagement. So what we've done is we're going to have booths from each of the jurisdictions, and we want them to tell their story about the amazing programs they have going for young people. You have an amazing program, multiple programs that you have going on here for young people in West Sacramento. You get a chance to tell that story, but in addition, to be able to recruit for boards and commissions. Every jurisdiction, whether it's a county, a city, we're always looking for good people to step up and help get involved. And the purpose of Yolo Fest is to encourage civic engagement. We want people to understand what the local government is, how to get involved, to be engaged, and to participate in our democracy. And with that, your city manager, he had a great suggestion, and I followed up on it, which is to connect up with the schools, so they can help promote this event through the schools. Because we want families, it's a family fun event, we want families to come, we want people and residents throughout the community to be a part of this, and this is going to be the first annual, and we want to continue to grow, because we want the Youth Empowerment Summit to grow. So we're excited about where this is all going, and again, it's to celebrate what we do and what you do. So with that, I wanted to thank you for allowing me this time to come and talk to you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Jesse. Very good.
Sure, just want to say thank you, Jesse, for being here. The Yolo Empowerment Summit was very inspiring to see the youth present. Some who were there were saying, you know, just wanted to, you know, do something, because I had to fulfill an obligation, but I'm so glad I came. It was a lot different than what I anticipated, I'm learning a lot. And I, you know, got so much out of it, and hearing what their issues are, and their struggles, and what we can do to try to help them out.
Thank you. Mayor Protopa Marosko.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for your presentation, sir. Jesse, we have had the opportunity to experience this for two years so far, and I remember last year, sitting with some students, and they were, I mean, miraculous, actually. It was very pleasantly surprising to hear so much feedback, and so much informed feedback from many of the kids. And I reported, both councilmember Sandin and I have brought back that feedback on various occasions in dealing with matters pertaining to this council. For example, last year, when we sat with the students, we learned that many of them were feeling trepidation at the time of graduation, worrying about whether or not ICE would show up to deport their parents by attending just a simple River City graduation here at the baseball stadium. You know, this year, I sat with a group of young men who appeared at the, I guess, from the outset to look like they were checked out. And then when we started to engage in conversation, they were educating me about their experiences on homelessness and gun control and school safety. One of them expressed some fears about his school, saying things that I never thought about. For example, he said, there are kids that bring their guns to school where he goes to school, and I thought, that was surprising, that can't be right. And he said, there's a lot of hunters that, you know, attend my school, we're a rural community, and they'll bring their guns and just leave them at the front. And how do we give, you know, a school safety plan when we have a culture that promotes, you know, the freedom to hunt and to use your guns to do so? But anything from the environment and clean water, to, you know, healthcare and other matters, it was just, it's just really impressive to hear from the kids. The one thing I know I've spoken to you about is, we had a group of River City kids that come out, and it is in Woodland. I would love to eventually see this be a rotating program, so that way, you know, because proximity is a lot, and I understand there's a lot of kids over in Woodland, and winters, Esparta, and whatnot, but at some point, I'd love to bring the kids over here to West Sacramento to see what we've got going on, and also encourage more of our local kids to get involved. But again, that's on the horizon, hopefully, and, you know, I just want to commend you for really challenging these kids. A lot of them had issues, I think, initially with soft skills, communication, eye contact, whatnot, but they really truly showed how much they could blossom, and that is exactly who we're looking for as the future of our, you know, new leaders.
Mr. Ledesma.
Thank you. Thanks, Jesse, for being here, and more so thanks for, like, my colleagues and for the tremendous work you're doing. The summit, earlier this year, was a lot of fun. I didn't know what to expect, that was my first, and getting feedback from Mayor Protopa Marosko and Councilmember Sandin from the previous year. I made sure to come out, and we had a blast, and it was just a lot of fun. And more importantly, I was really taken aback by the kids that were ready to engage, they just weren't sure. It built confidence in their ability to talk with us, and realized that we're just people too, and we're just, we were listening to them, and they had good ideas. Particularly for me, I was just taken back by two things. One is their passion around climate change, that they're going to live with it. And the other one was, they weren't sure how to get involved in kind of these issues that they had. And one of them was like, well, how do we pragmatically, or they didn't ask, they said, I don't know how to make this happen. Like, they brought up an issue at River City High School, because we had a nice contingent from River City. And like, who would I even talk to? So I grabbed her by the hand, I walked across the room, meet your board president, Jackie Wong, and we were able to connect right on the spot. And that's the part that we're like, oh my gosh, I can't believe you're doing this. This is how it happens. So I think that's the kind of spirit that is appreciated about this. It is about engagement. I appreciate you continuing to champion this, and I know that it takes dollars to kind of keep it going, so I urge the public to try to make it out, if not, make a donation towards the cause, so that way we can continue it. But thank you for continuing to work on this.
Thank you, I appreciate it. If I may, just, I don't want to cut you off, wherever you want to say something, I'm sorry, I just, I was hoping I could just follow up on you.
You want to rebut what he just said? Go right ahead.
I just want to say thank you, because to tap into what you've said, I'm so inspired by the young people. One of the individuals that was on the video was talking about climate change. You probably heard about the big protests in Davis, where it was led by a college student and a high school student. She was a high school student that was leading that protest, and was on the front page of the paper the next day, and what they did is they had letters that they had collected, and they delivered them to a city council member and a school board member to talk about climate change, engaging with the local elected officials there. Another young person in Woodland came up to me and said, Jesse, after that summit, I'm now a junior in high school, and I've started a respect club, because we should all be respecting one another on school and showing that dignity and respect to our fellow students. That's what you want, right there. And to hear that's happening in our community, and just so you know, Sacramento's making efforts to replicate this, Monroe County's also making efforts to replicate our model, so it's happening. And this is, you know, it can't be done without the support of the community, elected officials, and, you know, the city in general, all the cities that are involved with this to help us grow this program, so. But please, I'm sorry, I just was excited to share that with you.
Yeah, no, it's terrific. And you're an unusual county assessor. Most counties assess, you have other portfolios, but that's my favorite one for this kind of role. And the award is definitely well deserved, because of the leadership that you've played to put this together. It's not a typical role for a county clerk or register of voters or an assessor, to step forward and to try to, as you say, celebrate democracy and engage more people in it. I'm not surprised, you and I both worked in the Capitol together 100 years ago, on education and trying to lift up schools and kids at that time, and you've been doing it ever since, so it's no big surprise. At our last meeting, two weeks ago, we had the two young people that represented West Sacramento at the National Youth Summit. Next week, we have the, this week, is it this week? The Climate Commission, you know, River City High School's hosting the major high school youth engagement process around climate change activism, but directly connected not just to city council members, but also to philanthropic leaders, corporate leaders, and others in the region through the mayor's climate commission. Our Summer Steps program has, you know, been recognized widely across the state and the country, including today at the League of Cities. This is a, we've made a commitment as a community, as part of Yolo County, but in West Sacramento in particular, to be, we said the best place to grow up, to raise a family, but also the best place to grow up. And that's about quality education, it's also about great parks and amenities and services, and about a community that cares, and housing that's affordable and equitable, but it's also about opportunities to really engage in this way. So it's really great to see the work that you're doing and the connections that it's creating. I always mention the Seco Regional Leadership Academy for youth that started last year, we've had strong representation from our city as well. So it's a great set of pathways that have been opened up, and thank you so much for the work that you're doing.
Thank you. Thank you for the time, and thank you for your support, and come on out, if you're available, come out on Sunday, enjoy a good time and music. And by the way, Barry the Fish Maltin is going to be playing, he's going to be kicking it off, and this is the 50th anniversary of Woodstock, so he's in high demand. He was at Country Joe and the Fish, he is the Fish, in Country Joe and the Fish that performed at Woodstock. He will be there kicking off the event, and he's got a performance in San Francisco that evening, so that's why he can't stay, he's not the closing act. But McGowan is our former supervisor and council member here in West Sacramento, is going to be on one of the bands, so.
Oh, you've had us for a minute. Oh, sorry.
Yeah, West Sacramento.
Anything to do this weekend that does not involve unsupervised, the band playing, then this is a great opportunity.
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, take care. Okay, that brings us on to consent agenda, which is Items 3 through 12. Are there any items to remove, or any items for separate question or comment?
3 and 7.
Okay, so we have 3, 7, and 8. Item 3 is consideration of a contract with AECOM Technical Services Incorporated and Resolution 19-96 approving a budget amendment of $174,570 to Work Order 54017 from Fund 107 for the Climate Action Plan project. Councilmember Guerrero?
Yes, thank you, David. I had a couple of questions regarding what was included as part of the present, you know, the proposal, and there probably is some flexibility in incorporating additional suggestions that I wanted to provide to you today. And looking at the proposal, the AECOM proposal, page 13, where it says city commissions and city council engagement under Base 2 meetings, it has, for city council, one meeting, the adoption hearing. I was interested in adding a workshop in addition to that, so that we didn't have just one meeting, to take a look at that, and I was just going to put that as a suggestion to add that. And also in community engagement, I saw there were a few suggestions, but I thought maybe they were going to work together with you, and looking at additional suggestions for community engagement, we have some, I think, we can include, like, putting requests to participate in a survey and a water bill, or other ideas, but I want to see if we can do a little more than what was recommended here.
Yeah, we have a lot of tools at our disposal, you know, under that. First, regarding the workshop, this is really what the consultant is budgeting for their time. We certainly could provide it, do our own workshop before you, you know, as, from staff.
Okay.
So, and I would certainly anticipate this would take, you know, certainly more than probably one, you know, one formal hearing to, you know, ultimately conclude, also with the other commissions. Under community engagement, we certainly have other options, you know, available to us that staff can employ, such as the water bill information, we have our eye lights information, and what's in here is primarily where the consultant will be involved. My staff, myself and my staff will also be involved in this, along with our environmental services and sustainability group, where staff will lead many of these other efforts as well on engagement.
Okay, thank you.
So I have a couple comments on this as well. So the, I think this, you know, our work on the Climate Action Plan needs to be, it needs to be bold, and that doesn't entirely come through, through this document, which describes sort of, the beginning of it is about constructing a narrative of the things that we and others are already doing. That's not unimportant, for sure, because the painting a picture of the future where we all do more and more and more depends in part on us seeing, you know, that we're doing something now. So that makes sense, but I, you know, a lot has evolved in this space, and it shouldn't be a compliance exercise at all, but to really push the envelope. So I just, in terms of that framing, to the extent to which this is really a planning process and not just a inventory and accounting process, which if that's what it is, and that's okay, but we should declare it to be that. If we're going to open up the conversation about what are the strategies that we should do, then we should be open to real ones. But related to that, though, is that, and also to the engagement piece, is that we have a massive project underway right now, I mean, in terms of the commission that Councilmember Ledesma is sitting on, that has been doing an extensive amount of public outreach, not just to young people, but across the board and with other stakeholders. And so it seems that I would be reluctant to invest a lot more in replicating that for a technical document, when the commission has been doing that at the policy level. And it sort of, it keeps better faith with public engagement when you don't throw it away and say, okay, that was, oh, that's last week's engagement, now we're going to go do it again. But also, the commission's framing of the topics are at a much higher, at a level that members of the public can engage in better than in some of the very technical things around waste management, or some of the zoning algorithms and that sort of thing. So I like the way that community engagement's framed here, in terms of some of the pop-ups and some of the design thinking-based approaches. So the approaches are right, but I just, I wouldn't go whole hog crazy about it, because it's going to be happening right after the work of the Climate Commission, which has been done in a full lighted day, with lots of opportunities to participate, and with lots of alternative ways of engaging, that I know, I know Councilmember Ledesma's been hearing quite a bit of engagement and feedback about this process, and we should make good use of that. But yeah, I think for me fundamentally, if we should be clear what this process is, what the action plan is, is it collecting what we are doing or intending to do, and then accounting for the emissions and getting the numbers right? Or is it really an exercise in figuring out, you know, a whole new strategy? Those certainly imply different approaches for both how many times it comes to us, what the community engagement looks like, and what level of ambition we might expect out of the plan.
Yeah, I think where we're at here, you know, is if we were, you know, six months from now, when the mayor's commission was, you know, we're starting to conclude and all those recommendations were solidifying, we'd have a lot more of that reflected in here, given that that's still a ways away, and some of those things are still, you know, germinating, that we want to be able to ultimately account for what comes out of the mayor's commission, and what's ultimately adopted by that commission. It's probably only about halfway through its efforts. They, you know, just, I think their next meeting are going, getting into the mobility, you know, side of it at the next meeting next week, followed by the community resiliency matters. So I'm, you know, I'm very much part of that effort as well, and so we're going to take everything that we can gain out of there that's ultimately supported by that commission, and then bring that back home to us for our own work.
And this will still be underway, this AECOM process will still be underway at this point?
Yes, it will.
Because it is important that, you know, we're not, at the end of the commission process, say, well, we, actually, you know, while we were doing this, we just, we just finished a whole separate process on Climate Action Plan with a different set of engagement. Because we, it's highly likely we'll get to a point at the end of that commission process where we in Sacramento will agree on a lot of things, and other things will go our own way, and the extent to which we've gone through the process in good faith, both with them and with the public, I think we'll be in a better position. But of course, this is Mr. Ledesma's domain, so.
No, I think your comments are on, because it's just, I think the timing is probably right, all right? So we'll probably get towards mid to late next year and be starting or into this, and then, but we're starting to have more recommendations at that point coming down, that we will have to consider as a, as, we will have to consider on what we help, and how we adopt, and.
Yeah, I imagine we will do a lot of, do some of our technical work upfront, and then meanwhile, let the commission process, you know, go through its process, and then we'll end up meeting, coming back together as the commission process starts to wind down, and there, once we have more clarity on what ultimately commission's going to be adopted, I'm feeling like these planets could really align, align well.
And David has been active in some of the work already, and other staff has been, so I'm hopeful that you're learning as you go, and it will inform the technical side of it as you move forward.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. All right, thank you, David. Okay, that brings us on to Item 7, which is consideration of River Crossing Judges' panel selection of nominees for public art project located on the West Sacramento and Sacramento docks. Mayor Protopa Marosko.
Thank you. Hi.
Hi.
Well, I was actually very pleased to read this report, and I was impressed by the diverse group of judges on the panel and their selections. Specifically, our side, I thought, well, actually, I thought that both of the nominees are, have profound and very symbolic and inspiring, you know, they represent those, all of those things, and I just found them to be both very highly appropriate. With that said, I just had a couple questions.
Sure.
First off, how do I pronounce, is it Ettenesh Zalik or Zaliki?
Ettenesh.
Ettenesh.
Zaliki.
Zaliki, thank you. Now, I just wanted a little bit more background on the commission's feedback with respect to naming the art installation versus the dock, because I understand it was a 3 to 2 vote as to naming both of two vote as to naming both of them, Ettenesh Zaliki, as opposed to one being the literal translation of it, which was, you are my sister?
Yes.
And, and then the other being the actual name and surname.
So there was quite a dialogue, I watched it, I was at home, but I was able to watch it, and essentially, a couple of, well, the majority of the commission felt that oftentimes with immigrants, especially if you think about Ellis Island and those experiences where names are anglicized and morphed and changed, and they felt strongly that they wanted to keep the entirety of the name for both the dock naming and the artwork, the navigational flags spelling it out. And then the other group really liked the idea of the layered story, where one side of the river, if someone took the time to sort of uncover all the layers of the story, was, in a sense, reaching out to the other side, saying, you are my sister. So there was quite a discussion about that, and, but the majority chose the full name, so that the, they decided by vote, both the dock would have the full name, and the navigational flag spelling would have the full name. That was their recommendation to council.
Now, the navigational flag, how will I get either Ettenesh Zaliki or you are my sister, based on looking at the flags?
Well, you, you, there's a website, and the website is, actually tomorrow, there'll be a full announcement, a press release on the website, and there'll be all, we will probably put our own information near the project as well, so that people, it could be anything from, you can put a chip that an iPhone could, you know, read, a lot of information about it, but the website will be in place for a very long time, there'll be all this information published in the newspapers, we'll have an exhibit in city halls, Sacramento is gonna have an exhibit in their city hall, so there'll be a lot, excuse me, there'll be a period of time when there'll be a lot of information for people to understand and hear the entire story. But over time, of course, would depend on that we put the information out there to include the story about the literal translation of the name, to continue that moving forward and carrying that forward as a message of our community.
So if someone who are to be visiting the area with the flag, is there any type of information that they will see right there on the spot underneath the flags?
We haven't developed that, but there certainly can be. We plan to have, I, essentially, we just have to wait until the installation is, and the dock are completed, and then we can see where, where is a logical location, and how much information can we really place without, you know, having a bunch of signage that conflicts with the installation itself. The artist's very interesting, I mean, part of his project is that he does want it to be something that people sort of research and try to understand the layers, and so for a project that he did in England, for example, people really began researching the name of the individual that was chosen, and they found out that they had originally come to, into England as Caribbean slaves, and so, you know, it started, started this whole story that was through people's research.
If I may? Thank you. I just wanted to compliment the selection, and thank the judges from West Sacramento that, that participated in this, with Letizia and our ice cream man, Jess, who I thought, and what the rest of the group, selected something very bold, and, I think, layered or nuanced. Because when we did announce the project earlier in the year, and I had a chance to talk to the artist, I very much got the sense of what, what they were after in that process, that the whole goal isn't just, the artwork is, yes, there, but the goal of it is the process of understanding. He told me the story about his artwork in London, I also asked, I think he had one in Portugal.
Right.
And I was hoping I had a chance to see it, but he just really impressed upon me, you know, that the best part about it is the fact that people actually do that research, they wanna know who that was. And so it will be, you know, the story itself that was, that they chose, and the write-up in itself was an amazing kind of piece of story about how this came to be, or where this came from, and it was really touching. So I just wanna thank them for their service, and I'm glad I didn't see, get to see the, discussion around it, but I'm glad they did take as much time, they did, to discuss it and understand it, because it is, to me, kind of a, kind of what we were hoping, at least what I was hoping for, that, you know, have somebody's name there, but have it really sort of, take a deep look at what that, what that means in the community, so.
I just wanted to note, Councilmember Ledesma, that also Ms. Weatherly was a West Sacramento judge, she's a teacher.
Yeah, she's a teacher at River City, right? So, and I think that was the important part for me, is how, how they picked something that was uniquely different, and, but very still West Sacramento, not an obvious choice, which we've done for parks for people, or bridges for people, or whatever, this was something different, so, just wanted to thank them publicly.
Councilmember Guerrero?
Yes, thank you, I'm Mr. Mayor. I want to commend you for what was accomplished here, and when we.
Thank you.
Lot of work, a lot of work with all the applications that came in, and a lot of vetting, and how meaningful it was for everybody. I received an update at my Rotary Club this last Tuesday morning from Don Schatzel, and he is just so, he feels so passionate about this, and you can sense that this has grown a lot deeply among everybody. I remember when we first kicked off the press conference, and Chris Ledesma and Babzandim, we were all there, and we were excited, but we didn't know the outcome, and just keeping our fingers crossed, we'd get a lot of feedback, and we did, it was an abundant amount of feedback from both sides. And just to see the meaning behind who was selected, and, you know, just the immigrant history, and how it continues to flow, and we are, you know, a history of immigrants, and all sorts of backgrounds, people coming in, you know, by themselves, and just reflecting on now moving forward with Sacramento, and you are my sister, and just seeing that hopefully we can continue to speak about this, so not just, and the maritime flags, that it's there, and in the actual lettering, but the whole history, and where we're going as a community. And I think that this, what was selected, and what we continue to do in the future, is important as we move forward. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. And thanks to Commissioner Donkey in the back of the room as well, who's a member of that commission for, maybe since this beginning, since the, since the beginning of that, of that commission, and so thank you for your, your service. I don't know what side of that debate you were on, but you didn't fill out a slip, so I'm assuming you're happy with the outcome, one way or the other. Thank you. All right, item eight is consideration of request for consent to approve the water transfer between the city of West Sacramento and Woodland-Davis Clean Water Agency. Just wanna be absolutely clear, that this is a, this is not a permanent transfer for all time, that this is a, this is subject to, part of what we're doing here is protecting our long-term interests, and having somebody to contribute to the cost of that, but that our long-term interest is maintaining our access to this water supply.
That, that's correct.
Okay, great, okay, terrific, thanks.
Thank you.
And then just on the other Public Works Operations items, there are a couple that, in which, you know, we're, we're moving to new contracts with more favorable financial conditions and longer terms and whatever, and just to, just to congratulate staff on the work that they've done to, to craft, you know, tighter, leaner, and more, more, more cost-effective for, for ratepayers in our city, and for taxpayers in our city, so, so good work. Okay, that then brings us to the conclusion of the consent agenda, items three through 12, or is there a motion?
Move second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Ledesma, second by Councilmember Guerrero. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none. That motion carries, that brings us to our regular agenda, item 13, which is consideration of Amendment Number One to the City Manager Employment Agreement. And we have the agreement in the packet, this has been, this is the result of the city council's review of the city manager's performance, and the council's evaluation found the manager's performance to be superior across the full range of his responsibilities, and are therefore, is what is before, is a change in compensation, so I'm trying to, our summary of, Mr. Attorney, which of the, which, what's the set of provisions that we need to orally?
If you're, if you look at the amendment itself, the two underlined paragraphs, if you could just identify those.
Okay, so this would add to the, the item before us would add to the city manager's employment agreement through Amendment Number One, under the, under Section Six salary, effective the beginning of the pay period inclusive of September 1st, 2019. Employer, which is the city, agrees to pay employee for his services rendered pursuant heretofore an annual base salary of $210,000 payable in installments at the same time as the other management employees of the employer are paid. Employer shall again review and evaluate the employee's performance in February 2020, following the evaluation and effective the beginning of the pay period inclusive of March 1st, 2020. Employer agrees to pay employee for his services rendered pursuant heretofore an annual base salary of $220,500 payable in installments at the same time as the other management employees of the employer are paid. All right, so that's the item before us. Is there any discussion or motion?
All right, Mr. Mayor, I would make the motion with the full endorsement of this, and just thank the city manager for all his work. You've taken this leadership position on with great enthusiasm, and your, the work of the city, leadership in the city speaks for itself, it's just, we've done a tremendous job over the past year, just wanna thank you for that. And with that, I'd like to make the motion for the recommended action.
And I second.
Okay, so it's been moved by Councilmember Ledesma, second by Mayor Protemo Roscoe. Councilmember Guerrero?
Thank you. I just want to add that as a new city council member, I appreciate all the time you have spent with me to, you know, get me up to speed quickly. You've done it in a way that has helped me to understand, and, you know, helped me to, you know, be more effective in my role as well, so I appreciate all you've done, and also, all that you're doing for the city. You're pretty comprehensive, and just doing a great job, thank you. So with my endorsement as well, you have that.
Mayor Protemo Roscoe, did you mind adding?
We don't have to. The only thing I would say is that, as we make these, these sorts of changes in compensation, a lot of factors go into them, we, the council is attentive to the relationship between executive compensation in the city, and the compensation of all of our other employees, the city's fiscal condition. Having said all of that, it is the case that the, this city manager, through his both direct actions and the way in which he's managed the budget and other appropriations items, has saved the organization millions of dollars, just in the last year, so the, the small adjustment in a couple of thousand dollars in compensation is well worth it, and certainly well within the city's means, as a result of the improved efficiencies in the organization and the budget, so.
All right, so with that, does this require a roll call, too, or?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay, then all those, the motions before us have been moved by Councilmember Ledesma, second by Mayor Protemo Roscoe. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. That brings us to item 14, which is consideration of Resolution 19-100 to join the Valley Clean Energy Alliance, Joint Powers Agency as an associate member, and appointing two members of the city council to serve as the city's directors on the VCEA Board. Mr. Drost?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council, that is tonight's recommendation. By way of background, VCEA is the Valley Clean Energy Alliance. That's a joint powers authority formed in 2016 by the cities of Davis and Woodland, as well as Yolo County. It operates a community choice aggregator called Valley Clean Energy. The community choice aggregators, such as BCE, are programs that allow local governments to procure power for their residents from alternative suppliers, while still receiving transmission services and distribution services from the local investor-owned utility, in this case PG&E. Valley Clean Energy has been operational for a little over a year, and provides power to the residents of Davis, Woodland, and unincorporated Yolo County. As part of the ongoing PG&E bankruptcy proceedings, the VCEA Board has proposed to move beyond the community choice aggregator model, and acquire and operate PG&E's local distribution systems in Yolo County. Such an acquisition would make Valley Clean Energy the public power provider in Yolo County. A representative from Valley Clean Energy, Mitch Sears, their general manager, is here this evening, I'll let him speak more to the details of their effort, but their pursuit of the acquisition is moving forward fairly quickly, with plans to submit a proposal in bankruptcy court proceedings soon, and if they are ultimately successful, we can expect that legal and transitional process to play out over the next year or two, just to give you guys an idea of the timeframe. In conjunction with the effort, VCEA has created an associate membership on their JPA, and invited the cities of West Sacramento and Winters to join their board in that capacity. I should note, it's not included in the staff report, but last night, Winters did vote, the city council did vote to accept that invitation and join. Now, what associate membership would mean, they've created this designation to provide the two cities with, you would say, a seat at the table as the, on the board, when it comes to decisions and actions surrounding their efforts to acquire PG&E's assets in Yolo County. Joining VCEA in this capacity would not obligate the city to participate in the community choice aggregator, or make any decisions related to their power providing services. Rather, West Sacramento would simply have an equal voice to the other members of the JPA, when it comes to the future PG&E's distribution systems within the county, and as such, within the city. We see this, accepting this invitation to join the VCEA in a limited capacity as a logical one, with little in the way of potential immediate risks, and as such, we are recommending you adopt the resolution before you tonight. With that, I will hand it over to Mitch Sears, who can provide some additional information, and we'll both be here to answer any questions.
So first, a question for, for our staff, so the, this item recommends that we execute the joint powers agreement, and then, and that we enter into this associate membership category that's part of the agreement. None of that's attached, in terms of, like, what is the agreement that we are being asked to sign? Is it possible for us to get a link, you know, sort of immediately?
Yeah.
In order to see, or just the agreement that we would be, 'cause it's really, it's very important, obviously, to know the terms of what, you know, what's in the agreement as to terms of exit, and what the vote requirements are, and what happens, you know, in, in, in all those eventualities, so.
That's oversight on our part, I'll get that immediately.
Okay, and do you know, is, if the associate member provisions, is that part of the JPA, or is that a separate activity?
They amended, I believe, and Mitch will correct me if I'm wrong, they amended their joint powers agreement to reflect that associate membership with specifically delineated authority, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll get on providing you with the joint powers agreement immediately.
Okay, terrific, thanks, welcome Mitch.
Mayor, councilmembers, my name is Mitch Sears, as your staff pointed out, I'm the interim general manager for Valley Clean Energy, and have been with the, the program for, well, since before it began, a number of years ago. We do, as, as just a little bit of background, we are serving customers within the cities of Woodland and Davis, as well as the unincorporated area of Yolo County, with about 55,000 customer accounts that we serve right now. And in, I guess, in direct response to Mayor Baldwin's question, we did actually work with both the city attorneys of Winters, and with, with your city attorney as well, to review the document as it was being developed, to make sure that it met the needs of those that we were inviting to, to come to the table. So that's an oversight on, on our part as well, as not providing that, that information for your packet. But the overall objective that the Valley Clean Energy Board, when adopting this amendment to the Joint Powers Agency, was essentially to allow for a broader discussion about the electrical infrastructure here in Yolo County, and whether or not it made sense for the individual jurisdictions and the, the Joint Powers Agency to pursue that potentially. So we've broken that down into multiple phases. Phase one really culminates in a letter of intent, and an offer to PG&E, similar to what the city of San Francisco has done, what the South San Willcane Irrigation District has done, in offering a price for, for the infrastructure, based on appraisal and analysis of what that, what that infrastructure is worth, balanced against what the returns would be for the community. So really, the objective of Valley Clean Energy in this particular effort is to assess whether or not. whether or not it can achieve its mission more effectively by expanding the scope of what it what it does. What I do want to emphasize and what we've talked about with the Valley Clean Energy Board is that the core operations of continuing as a community choice aggregation program are really what we're focused on. We view this as being an opportunity within the bankruptcy, within the context of the bankruptcy proceeding that's occurring right now. And as described to us by our very experienced bankruptcy counsel, this is a once in a blue moon opportunity. It potentially avoids the issue of going into a condemnation process, which is how this type of effort has been engaged in in the past. The bankruptcy allows for a direct engagement around around the issues that have been highlighted by by PG&E's bankruptcy to help try to solve some of those issues, provide some resources potentially to fire victims and other creditors, and we would potentially play a small part in that. But it's not a well-developed or defined path. I'll be very clear with the with the council on that, and that's part of the discussion that we're having at the Valley Clean Energy Board as well, is that this really hasn't occurred before. And so inserting ourselves into that into that process does two things. One, it allows us to, again, assess the the opportunity, the value that having a robust and reliable electric grid system here in Yolo County provides, but also whether or not there's the capacity to be able to take that on. So that's where we're at. We're at the culmination of phase one. We're hoping that the invitation is accepted by the city council tonight, as it was by the Winter City Council last night, so that we can engage across the entire county in this discussion. So with that, I'm happy to answer any any more detailed questions.
Councilmember LaDesmond?
Thank you. Thank you very much for being here tonight and I think staff are trying to get us the agreements through email. Some minds up, I think, yours.
I think I have it, so I'm going to.
Okay.
The JPA itself, including the amendments on the associate member, so.
Thank you. And it's kind of, and maybe you can answer sort of what I wanted to make sure we're in there. And again, thank you for coming. I know the CCA you've been working through and working with for has taken a sort of has been an option for folks in the county and throughout the state to be able to start taking ownership and power with a different kind of mission is maybe the for-profit shareholder driven PG&E has in terms of what is focused on and goals around things that are important to us, around climate change and where you get your power, having more control over that, I think, is the number one goal. But what's presented us today is is an opportunity, as you said, to maybe get control of the distribution system that it comes through. And so my questions are a little bit around sort of what that would mean, because I'm still not quite clear on putting a bid for this at this process and kind of understanding what the entire, the compelling reason why PG&E would accept that at this at this point, because I know they just recently turned down a bid from San Francisco, I believe, to do this. So I'm trying to understand, my viewpoint, kind of, maybe in layman's terms, for the folks, for me, more broadly, kind of, what's the opportunity, what do you mean, taking control of it, this takes it out of the process of bankruptcy? Is that basically, and we can control maybe where it goes next?
So like San Francisco, like South San Willcane Irrigation District, we would submit our bid to PG&E directly. They would assess that and and get back to us with an answer as they have with San Francisco. I don't think we, we're not so naive to think that they're going to accept our offer any different than they accepted San Francisco's offer. But the difference here is that it's more than just PG&E that's in play here. There are other creditors, like the fire victims, like the bondholders, that are that have produced a competing reorganization plan within the bankruptcy proceeding. Just recently, the bankruptcy judge accepted that second reorganization plan. So that presents an opportunity for San Francisco, for Valley Clean Energy, for the irrigation district, to say to the creditors, there is, you know, an amount of resources that are available to be able to fund your reorganization plan if you need those funds. Now, that's what, when I made the comment that this is not a well-defined path, it's never really kind of been done before. The the opportunity is not necessarily with PG&E, though we would certainly sit down with them if they if they if they responded in a positive way to our offer. But it's more, the opportunity is more in terms of, does the competing plan and the folks that have put together that competing plan view our offer as being something that can be a part of that plan? Even further, it could very well be that the bankruptcy judge views a need for additional resources and can can have potentially an influence in how the reorganization plans are are ultimately structured. So what our main objective at the end of here, at the end of phase one, is to essentially put our offer out in public so that those that do have decision-making power, do have the ability to review it and determine for themselves whether or not that's something that's to their benefit within one of the competing reorganization plans. So I don't know if that gets directly at your question.
I think it does.
Yeah.
And so let's just take a hypothetical, and I hope you don't mind me taking this on. The hypothetical here for me is whether they, you know, either the the offer's accepted.
Sure.
Right? And I know that the chances of that right now look very slim, if that, but I'm trying to get after what's the end game for for.
The end game would be to set up a publicly owned utility in Yolo County.
That's what I'm getting at, yeah.
Sure. So it would be something similar to like what Roseville has done, what Lodi has done. I mean, of course, those programs are many decades old. SMUD is obviously the the direct example. But the end game would be to set up a publicly owned utility within Yolo County that has local decision-making authority, has resources to be able to execute around the the objectives and the policies that we develop locally. So it really is about local empowerment. It really is about local decision-making and be able to capture those resources that are currently leaving, you know, our communities in the form of of payments. So rather than going into a an investor-owned utility model where those funds leave the system, they're not available for upgrades, they're not available for maintenance, they're not available for operations, reinvesting those to make our systems more robust, better serve the communities that we are we're serving, and potentially provide economic benefit, direct economic benefit to to ratepayers. So that's part of what BCE is doing right now on the generation side of the bill.
Right.
What this would do is it would sort of complete the picture and allow us to engage on the delivery side of the bill.
Right.
But that's, again, that's to be to be seen whether or not we're able to accomplish that. Now, what I would point out to the council also is that right now, Valley Clean Energy is designed around this community choice aggregation. So our customers, we need to compete for our customers. We need, because our customers can leave and opt out and go back to back to PG&E. In the publicly owned utility model, our the customers would be part of that. There would be no options for going to a different utility. So again, this is very similar to what's happening in SMUD, Roseville, Palo Alto, all the other fifty-four public utilities here in California that operate today. So that would be one of the changes that would be, if we if we if we were the proverbial dog that caught the car, that would be one of the outcomes also.
And would the would then the the Valley Clean Energy entity be still retain the sole rights to those assets that we just purchased? Or if the county and all the participants downstream decided to set up a district, would that be the, would it, I'm trying to understand how that would occur?
Right.
Right? Because there would be two different entities.
Yeah, it would be two different entities. And what I would say to the council is that I'm happy to answer those questions if you join our board, but, no, but the.
What I'm answering, what answers is the legal hook on if we were, if, you know, that's the part that I'm, because what I'm concerned, what I'm thinking around is the options we have as a city and.
Right.
And being able to have those assets, be kind of, where does where does it draw along? Where's the legal end? Where are the legal fences along the way?
Right. And if I if I understand your question correctly, there would be nothing that would necessarily limit West Sacramento or Winters or Davis or Woodland or the county from sort of striking out on its own if it made the most amount of sense for that individual community. We believe in the analysis shows that doing it collectively probably makes the most amount of sense on the on the delivery side, but that may or may not be the case. Part of what we want to do is have a discussion to dig into to questions like that that says, how should we organize this? Because it's not a predetermined outcome that Valley Clean Energy continues to exist going forward. If a publicly owned utility is formed, it may be that a new JPA is formed, for example. It could be that, let's say, three out of the five jurisdictions decide to go forward with it. That could be another spinoff. But the the main point here is that Valley Clean Energy is already doing quite a complex task that in earlier efforts around this, there was critique that we didn't know what we were doing and couldn't handle the complexity of the generation side of the the business. Well, in fact, we're a year and a half old. We've paid off our seed loans to our member jurisdictions on the order of a million and a half dollars three years early. We have SMUD as a as a contracting agent that's helping us kind of navigate through these things. So we think that we built up at least experience on the generation side of the bill that allows us to move forward. But in an in more direct answer to your question, part of the discussion is going to be, what kind of structure, what kind of organization do we form up around this idea if it comes to be? So that's, again, one of the reasons why we're really interested in having all the potential players at the table as we go through these discussions.
And I think I understand that. I think you had it right to begin with is my, what I'm after is what are our options is in West Sacramento? Because I think the overwhelming feedback I get is residents at this point and businesses need a choice. Like there's this, we only, we don't have any today.
Right.
Current provider, I don't need to say a whole lot about it, but it's it's something we have as a city and council, we've contemplated quite a few times, I think it's on our priorities and the management agenda are high priorities, is what are our options? So to kind of stick with your analogy, you know, yes, with a dog, we're to catch the car, in this case. Dog's also very, there's a lot of cars on the street, there could be. And I want to make sure that if we have the opportunity to go catch another one, that that easier, that gets us to the same place. Where would, are there any legal sort of holdups that we're getting bound into? I'm supportive, generally supportive of the idea of this. I just also don't want to box us in, and you've kind of addressed that, that we would, if something else came along, I don't know what that may be. But it's just, it's just want to make sure that we, A, we're not boxing ourselves in from the actual bid on the asset, that now we're now we're, we have to stick with the CCA, which it doesn't sound like we do, but we have to explore that. Or B, is that if another opportunity came through to either form our own municipal utility district or to, hate to say it, annex from SMUD or whatever else came along, that we, those options are available to us as well.
Yeah. And again, I think the details of those would be worked out during our our coming phases of of the analysis, but there's nothing in the associate membership, either intent, and I would defer to your legal counsel, that locks in. I mean, even the letter that letter, the offer letter, it's a non-binding offer letter, and there are multiple off-ramps. As we've talked to the member jurisdictions, this has not been sort of, this isn't the first time that we've heard this question, as you can imagine. So they, there are multiple off-ramps within the kind of offer process. So again, if one or more jurisdictions said, you know, that really doesn't work out for us as we move through the process, the way that we've done the analysis, we're able to isolate one or more jurisdictions to kind of pull them out of the the financial and valuation analysis that allows us to potentially move forward as a subgroup of those that are that are sort of sitting at the table. So it certainly was not the intent. I don't think there is any legally binding language that would prevent West Sacramento or Winters or anybody else from saying, that's fine.
Yeah.
What I would say, though, is that the community choice aggregation program, because we are in the process, and this isn't true for West Sacramento or Winters at this point, even though they've chosen to to come on to the, as a full CCA member, beginning in two thousand and twenty-one, that once we start buying power on behalf of customers in a particular community, then the obligation changes because we have those, what would be stranded costs if a community wholesale wanted to pull out of that. Now, what we what we say is that, you know, in the context of the CCA, individual businesses and residents can withdraw and opt back into PG&E, that is their option. But a wholesale sort of extraction of an entire community in the CCA model would create potential issues. But we're not anywhere close to.
And I think it's going, yeah. And to your point, the off-ramps or the milestones when we hit those is just, we'll just kind of want to dig into those a little bit, just, and again, I don't think anything's in front of us today that would, like, have me searching for that on rap. This is the only one that's been afforded us at this point. And I see, I know some of the members of the board from other city councils have at least approached me and sort of about the CCA Valley Clean Energy before, which is why it's on our our priority list for this year, is to see if it's worth, you know, our offering to our residents and businesses. So I know this, but this opportunity is in front of us, and you're giving me kind of the the general glide path of sort of how this might go down and and so that we can continue to look at our options. But I kind of see where you're at, as long as those are clearly articulated. I know as we look through the various documents, but I just want to make sure those are very clear for us, that's all.
Sure.
Appreciate your your answers. Thank you.
Councilmember Gareau?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity. I wanted to go back a little bit. This is abrupt to have this one shot and make a decision today. And wanting to provide the transparency, because if it's a decision we make, it's a decision impacting everybody, and it's going to be resonating on whether or not it was the right decision and how, you know, we expedited our process to, you know, to do something that's such a dramatic change. But going back, we have been talking about doing something for a while now with PG&E. And now with the PG&E shutting off the energy, it's becoming a crisis for certain communities, and we are going to try to do our best to, you know, prevent that. And having control is one of those ways, but also having control of the increased costs that we anticipate are going to start happening in the future, the increased costs as people use energy from four to seven P.M., from what I've heard. And it's so, so we are now, I think, having to move a little more quickly to come up with some decisions and taking it extremely seriously. And appreciate the opportunity that you're providing with us today, but also aligning myself with my fellow city council members here in making sure that we continue to explore other options that is beneficial to West Sacramento and the residents. And, you know, we appreciate the partnership with Yolo County here to do something together, but just making sure that we have the ability to flexibly maneuver so that we can maximize, because our, what we tried to do in the past, I think, is what was unique in trying to annex with SMUD, that did not go through. But I know that residents here are interested in doing something different, which is good, but doing something that maximizes what we can achieve. We have old power lines and just the hardware is is pretty outdated. And so the liability issue on what could happen out here, for me, is something that, you know, if something happened that, you know, harmed anybody, a member of power line going down on the street, it could harm somebody. So I am also, you know, making sure that if there's anything that we have to contribute, if there's a liability issue, it's now going to be, I guess, Yolo County altogether, or the JPA shares that. And right now, it's PG&E, but what would that look like if something like that happened?
So so very good points, and again, issues that we are, we're talking about, certainly in the city of Winters, they have a their own set of of risk, sort of risk profile. So it's a question that that is coming up quite often. Just in very sort of general terms, already. Just in very sort of general terms, already as rate payers to PG&E, we all collectively absorb and, and face the risk that you just pointed out, something that's much more immediate, you know, pole falling or, you know, lines coming down because of the age of the system. That is one of the key focuses of, of this effort, which is, how do we, how do we capture more of the money that would otherwise be going to upgrading and updating those systems, and be able to make local decisions and prioritize locally, where we know our communities in ways that the investor-owned utility either doesn't or isn't incentivized to really pursue that? And so we're hearing this in all the different communities that we, that we operate in, including West Sacramento and, and Winters. So that is part of the, that's part of the objective of this, is to say, how do we, how do we get better outcomes for the communities that we serve? And so it's not a, it's not a full answer. Now, there's, there are methods that would be, you know, would be employed, sort of industry best practices, but what we, what we look to are examples that are around us. So Roseville, we look at S M U D, we look at Redding, we look at other publicly owned utilities, and how do they manage the system so that they don't face the same amount of risks? Principally, what they're doing is they're reinvesting in their systems. And that's also true in areas that have very high fire risk. So the example that we look to is the Rural Electric Cooperative in northeastern California called Plumas Sierra. And what they're, where they're at is they have higher fire risk than arguably any place in the state, and yet, they are addressing that risk by reinvesting in their system, by maintaining the system, and, and, and that's driven by local decision-making and local prioritization. So that's really at the center of what we're, what we're looking at here. The other co-benefits that come along with that are better responsiveness and service from, from the provider, potentially, potential cost savings that are associated with it. So there's, there's sort of a multitude of objectives that are potentially in play here. The, the really important part about Valley Clean Energy as it stands right now, and if we were able to, again, catch the car here, is that these are locally elected officials who are accountable to the communities that they serve, which is much, a much different model than what we have right now, where trying to engage down in San Francisco at the Public Utilities Commission, it's, I think it's being generous in saying that that's a Byzantine, you know, situation there, and so it becomes really, really difficult for local entities to engage. That's part of what CCA is across the state. There's 20 of them now, serving 10 million customers across the state. It's really allowed a local government voice to be at the table for the first time effectively, really. And so that's part of what we're trying to advance also with the investigation of, of expanding the services into the delivery portions of, of Yolo County, so.
So, so the maintenance and, and the upgrading, is that a decision, so that's a decision among the JPA, and, and where to prioritize that based on the revenues we would be getting?
Yes.
Is that, how does that decision, you know, is there going to be like a way based on who is maximize, who has more revenue, or like a percentage of that, or is it going to be just made equally among all the voting members?
To be determined. I mean, that's, that's part of being at the table, frankly. Right now, the only example that I can use is, is the CCA, which is, they make joint decisions to prioritize programming that we're already doing. For example, we got a $2 million grant through SACOG to do electric vehicle charging in the communities that, that VCE serves. So there's a prioritization process that goes around about, well, where do the, where do those resources land? How do we work with the communities that we're, that we're serving to get the best outcomes? That's done jointly. That's done around the table, it's done by the policy that's set by the board. So that would be, that, I would anticipate that that would be replicated on a, a board that would be serving as a publicly owned utility as well, where the prioritization happens through that type of a process. So I don't have a real answer for you at this point, because that's really kind of a phase two, phase three kind of discussion, where the, the structure of the organization is really determined. But again, I, I think that that's one of the, one of the real values, I think, of, of having both West Sacramento and Winters join us at the table to have those discussions.
Okay, and also if we can make the document that we receive public, along with the other documents, so, if that, we can post that as well, you know, when, when you get a chance.
And that is posted on our website.
Oh, it is posted on your website.
Yeah, I was going to say, those are public documents.
Okay, thank you.
Right.
I had a couple of questions, and I have a few for the city attorney, and perhaps the manager, and for Mr. Droz too. So the, first, our sister communities in Yolo County in establishing Valley Clean Energy have been, you know, real leaders and innovators in this space, and want to congratulate. We wouldn't be, we wouldn't be here tonight if, if those, if those communities had not moved forward with, with creating the CCA in the first place, and with great care for how to organize it. So big kudos to, to sort of being ahead of the game in this question, but also by trying to, trying to solve the cost issues that we've all been grappling with, with respect to the comparative disadvantage that we face with, with PG&E. But I want to get down to some brass tacks, because these are, these are big, you know, these are big, you know, the issues are super important, high risk, and governance and some of these agreement issues matter. So, so could, could we be in a situation in, in a month or six months where we've decided that another alternative, as Councilmember Lita has just described, there's some other alternative that involves us trying to do something different, including the infrastructure that's in our city, where we are in direct conflict with the, with the Valley Clean Energy members that, over our objection, would be attempting to acquire the entire transmission system in our, in our city? Is that, is that a foreseeable possibility?
I, I don't believe so. I mean, I, I don't know that any circumstance that would occur based on my experience with Valley Clean Energy Board and, and the, the sort of the effort and the mission of that organization that would result in anyone who doesn't necessarily want to participate in a particular way being, being forced into that kind of a situation. So again, as I talked about before, there is, so when you, when you take over the delivery system, there's sort of a separation of, from the PG&E system, and so you can, you can slice it and dice it in a number of different ways to be able to serve different parts of the community. It's kind of like your house, right? You've got a big circuit breaker, and you've got different circuits that are running around the county. So you can divide it up by kind of that, those circuits. And so West Sacramento, though we haven't done the, the deep analysis yet, we haven't ground-truthed it, it's, you can isolate it, right? You can pretty much isolate any.
150 years of that, yeah.
Yeah. I'm not advocating for that, but, but it is possible from, from an electricity standpoint, I should be clear. But the, so the opportunity is there. I, I, you know, you, you ask a sort of a theoretical question that I'm not sure that I have a complete answer for tonight, other than to say that, you know, Valley Clean Energy, I think, and the jurisdictions that are involved with it right now, have, I think, made a, a good faith effort to say, come join us at the table, no cost, let's talk about what, what the outcomes might be. If it, again, doesn't make sense to West Sacramento or Winters or anybody else to be involved for, for whatever reason, I don't think there's anything that binds you to, to that process, until, until I think the contract is signed.
I'm asking more not about binding us, but about binding Valley Clean Energy. Part of it is, I'm asking is that we're at this stage in part because Valley Clean Energy has already announced that it's doing this, or that it's, it's heading in the direction of seeking to acquire the transmission system, transmission delivery infrastructure for the whole county, including us, and, but this is the first time where we are being informed, or much less consulted. And so recognizing the, the pace and the insanity of what's been going on, I can understand, but it, but it, but it's not the precedent I think any of us would want to be setting in terms of, you know, where, where we go for, if we deter, if we, on a self-determination basis decide we want to go in a different direction, that we don't want to have set up a, a system in which we are combatants with our, with our neighbors, I think is the.
Fair point, fair point. And again, I, you know, in terms of the, the pace of what's happening right now, we're, we're running to, to keep up as well. So, you know, to the degree that I can apologize for that, I will, but it's, it is, it's not exactly the, the process that anybody envisions, including PG&E, including anybody else that's involved with this. It really is an unprecedented kind of situation that we're in right now.
I'm partly asking also on behalf of Davis, because as you probably, you know, the JPA provides for kilowatt hour based voting as a, as a bottom line, and, and our kilowatt hours per year are 50% higher than Davis's, so I just want to make sure we're protecting them against us also in this process.
Right, yeah. And everybody needs to go into it eyes wide open, clearly. And, and my role with Valley Clean Energy, at least as it stands right now, is to try to represent the interests of, of all the jurisdictions that are involved with, within the discussion. And so, like last night, talking to Winters, they asked that same question, what about this proportional voting based on kilowatt hours? Are we going to get overwhelmed? What I told them is that the way, the culture of the VCE board right now is that we haven't had any, we've had one non-unanimous vote in the three, approximately three years that it's been in play. It's never, no one's ever invoked the, the proportional voting. And that's not to say that it won't ever happen, because you need to be able to have a, a method for being able to make decisions when not everybody agrees. And as long as everybody goes into that eyes wide open, I, that's just part of the, the process that you accept. More directly to your question, again, I don't see any, any situation or any structure being put into place that would allow, not allow, an individual jurisdiction or multiple jurisdictions to extract themselves from the discussion, up until the point when everybody signs on the, on the bottom line. And there are multiple off-ramps throughout the process for everybody. If things don't necessarily go the way that everybody believes that they should be going, collectively, they can make that decision as well.
Okay, so to, to that point, I mean, the JPA would, the JPA has the powers that the city, that its members have.
Yes.
Is there, does the JPA have the ability to take the, that offer, for example, from, from whatever the term, the interim stage or whatever, to, to final? Does the JPA board itself have the power to make those commitments, and we just have to watch to make, be careful that we have an emergency meeting to exit if we don't like it? Or is, are the most momentous decisions like, like, like pulling the final trigger on committing to, you know, long-term bonding and whatever, in order to acquire that system? Is that, is that something that returns to the jurisdictions in some form?
So again, I think that that's a question that will be put to the board once all, once we sort of figure out who's going to be at the table. But the JPA board does have, technically has the authority to move forward with, you know, with an offer. What we've, what we've done functionally, however, is to return back to the, to the member jurisdictions, the city councils and the board of supervisors, to say, here's what we're thinking about doing, what do you think about that? To take the temperature of the, the different jurisdictions. And the board was pretty clear, the Valley Clean Energy board was pretty clear, because they're made up of members of, of those, of the city councils and board of supervisors, is that they weren't going to pursue something that was at odds with what the majority of their, of their decision-making body would do. So again, there's nothing that I can point to in the JPA document that says this is exactly how this is going to go down, but that's been the culture and the, and the approach that we've employed up to this point. I don't see any point in, you know, from, from a general manager's perspective, in saying that we take any other approach other than that, because really, at the end of the day, we don't want to have an organization that is, starts off at odds with one another. It ends up being probably not the best outcome, which is one of the, the primary drivers of, of all this. So I, I'm trying, I'm trying to be as specific to your, to your questions as I can be at this point, but there's, there's more detail that needs to be developed.
No, I understand, I mean, the, the Yolo culture, our, our two sister cities practically live together, so they have a, it's, there are a lot of cultural norms and behavioral norms that are, that are enforced because they know that they'll have another thing that they have to, you know, cooperate on five minutes from now. We, because of the isolation, it's, it's because it's easy to isolate us and for us to isolate ourselves, that doesn't exist as much. And so the, the governance and legal and contractual protections are, in my view, are, can be more important.
Sure.
Because we don't have the web of relationships that exist between the other, the other two big cities in the county, in order to sort of enforce the best, the best kinds of behavior. So that's what I'm asking. The other question I have is, is a, is a smaller one, but it's just informed by, by my own personal experience on the Habitat Board.
Yes.
Which is the Community Advisory Committee for Valley Clean Energy, is that, is that, does it, does its scope extend to this question of, of the delivery system, that the, the scope of work in which we would be joining, is that also covered by the Community Advisory Committee?
Tangentially, it is, but it has, they're not sort of directly involved in it. Again, part of that is the pace of, of the process as it unfolds, and, and sort of the twists and turns that we're finding within the bankruptcy court proceeding. So the Community Advisory Committee would be, is, is only, membership on the Community Advisory Committee is only offered to full members. So, so while you would be, if you approved this tonight, you would be adding two associate members to the VCE board, there wouldn't be a, a representation on the Community Advisory Committee as it stands right now. Now, the VCE board may decide that that makes more sense to, to add that, but it's not really been part of what the Community Advisory Committee has focused on at this point, primarily, in part, because we really have been trying to work towards getting a basic offer on the table. Because without that, we're not in the game. And as you know, that offer has not been released yet publicly, but we're poised to be able to, to do that fairly, very shortly. But in answer your question, the advisory committee, the Community Advisory Committee has not engaged deeply on this, though they've been briefed, and, and we've sought input from them on some of the, the basic parameters of the, of the overall effort. But again, the focus at this point has been, how do we value it, and how will we potentially finance it? Does it make sense for us? Does it pencil to be able to make an offer that is going to gain traction within the bankruptcy proceeding? And that's not really a Community Advisory Committee kind of question, it's, it's much more technical than what they're engaged in.
All right, well, maybe something to, to, you know, if we go down this road to, to tease out further, that, I mean, our, our experience on the Habitat JPA was, we had a similar, a similar thing, composed very similarly, for many of the same reasons, which was our, our friends across, directly across our cause, where he said, we have all these amazing scientists at the university, and we should have a committee where they tell us, give us advice. And we really overbuilt a Habitat program because we were building something that was of, you know, academic journal quality, but, but was funded principally by, by Woodland and West Sacramento, and didn't, we didn't have enough, we did not have the, the resources to meet that, as opposed to comply with our regulatory responsibilities. And I know this, this committee is, for a city like ours, it's extraordinarily not diverse, you know, along most of the modern measures of race, age, place, income, I mean, as a, as a sense of community advice, it's, it's a bit problematic. So I just want, I want to just kind of plant a flag into this.
Sure.
That if, if that committee is going to, going to play that, ultimately play that kind of a role in this space, it would be, you know, we'd need to, I think, it's a conversation we need to have about, about either its role or about its overall composition, because it's, it's, if it, if it means something and it's not unimportant, then who's on it really does, does, does make a difference.
Agreed.
So maybe, I'm, I'm sure, can I just ask you, that, we're, we're joining, if we, if we were to action tonight, we'd be joining the JPA in all of its provisions, and in terms of things like, and Mr. Droz may have something to say about this as well, in terms of things like the authority of the JPA to exercise eminent domain in the city, you know, given, given that we're talking about the acquisition of transmission lines and what have you, it's not completely unforeseeable. Is that, it, aren't, I didn't see in the, in the, in the changes to the JPA to create associate membership, that that was excluded, for example? Are there, are we, are we signing on to the entire thing and therefore signing all of the powers, all the relevant powers that we have to the JPA in that regard?
Yeah, but the discussions tonight have highlighted one point, which is that the amendment creates this associate class, otherwise grass you on to the joint powers agreement. So there is the power of eminent domain, as I understand it, within joint powers. There are special rules on voting for, for exercise of eminent domain power. Mitch may be able to speak to it, I've looked through it fairly quickly. It does look as if you may require consent from the jurisdiction to exercise eminent domain within the jurisdiction, and so you would be part of that. So yes, they could exercise jurisdiction, they could exercise eminent domain within West Sacramento, but only with West Sacramento's consent.
Okay. I, I'm, I'm interested in considering eminent domain, but really, it was more about the, the full range of powers, because I think the way, at least when I began to read the staff report last week when it came out, I, it, I, what I was thinking we were signing up for. when it came out, I, it, I, what I was thinking we were signing up for was sort of a joint exploratory effort, where we'd be, we would be sitting with the VCA board in this new capacity and we would together be figuring this thing out. And, and it seems like the, eminent domain is just one example, but the list of, the full, the, the Valley Clean Energy board would then have the, you know, they would have jurisdiction here within the scope of what those topics are to, to act and to take, you know, final actions. As eminent domain, you have, you indicated is a special case, but I just want to make sure I'm understanding correctly what's before us now.
I think so. I think the, the, the limited conversations that I had prior to this, the idea was the associate membership status would be created for the purpose of exploring the acquisition and then ultimately operation of transmission facilities. The rest of the joint powers agreement is really structured with the CCA in mind. What this highlights is perhaps there's some additional tinkering with the joint powers agreement that would be appropriate to deal specifically with how these particular powers are exercised. I think what's happened is in the interest of time. We haven't really had a chance to fully vet all that. The, you know, the preliminary conversation that I participated in with other city attorneys and county council was around the question of whether or not Valley Clean Energy could acquire transmission facilities and operate them. And more a question of, does that, is that a power that's common to the membership? And if so, then we can add it on to this. There was some conversation about should it be a separate joint powers authority just for this purpose. I think, my sense was, in the interest of time, this seemed to be the most expeditious way to deal with that. But there do seem to be some loose threads that need to be looked at.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I'm partly trying to contemplate a situation in which case we, our interests diverge and, and we're both, we both want to acquire that system, which hopefully is not the case, but, but, you know, who knows in this, in this energy situation? And, and where we are then, we are, we're then competing with someone for at least some portion of that period, has our powers and has the ability to say, on behalf of the, of the, of the land, essentially in West Sacramento, we are, we have the legal authority to make this offer on their behalf, just as much as they do. And so I'm just trying to, you know, play this, play this card game out a little bit farther.
Right.
There's no reason, I mean, I, I know we've all had conversations with, with our colleagues in other jurisdictions about it, so that, that it's not as though, you know, the game is afoot here. We're all trying to just figure out in this system, how do we do the best thing in order to protect the interests of our residents and our, and our other customers? So this, this is not about, it's not about a specific situation, but just trying to make sure that we're getting the, the governance and design as right as we can, while, while also not saying, let's come back and act on this seven months from now, once we have it perfect. So. Councilor Guerrero?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just did a couple more questions and appreciate the mayor's questions as well as to what it is we're deciding, but I also wanted to see like a timeline, you know, just to have, you know, be, you know, be able to wrap around, you know, what it is that is happening, when it's happening, when we can start seeing decisions, what it would look like to the customers here, you know, on the ground and, you know, how we do preparation and, and information or community outreach so they're aware, you know, has that happened already somewhere and is it working? Or is it something we're all just jumping in together and we're deciding that here today? And then if we decide to change our mind, it'll happen down the road. But is that what we're deciding here today as well?
So, again, really good questions, I keep saying that. But there, there is a basic community engagement and, and public outreach strategy that's been developed by, by Valley Clean Energy. We're also potentially coordinating with other jurisdictions that are also submitting bids to, to sort of talk, to deliver sort of a broader message. I mean, yesterday, the, the governor spoke to this issue directly, encouraging local jurisdictions to do exactly what we're doing, supporting San Francisco's bid in, in order to increase kind of the, elevate the discussion, I think, that's going on around PG&E. Again, that would be, so, again, keeping in mind that we've laid this out in, in multiple phases. Phase one is really just doing the, the work of getting the valuation in place to allow us to be able to get the letter submitted so that we're actually at the table, potentially at the table. That will be followed by phase two, which is a deeper dive in many of the questions that we're, that we're talking about here this evening, which are many of the same questions that we've, that we've encountered as we've talked to the other jurisdictions who are potentially involved in this. That will include increased community outreach. That is a, a keen interest, as you can imagine, on the part of the Valley Clean Energy board to make sure that there's a clear message that's being delivered and good information that's available to, to residents and business owners who are, who are in our existing service territory, let alone those that are potentially in, in communities that are not directly involved with Valley Clean Energy right now. So, that again, would be a conversation and direction would be provided by whatever, whatever board would be constituted around this question with VCE. So, I, I can't sort of lay out, sort of the, the document, the strategy for you this evening, but that is in play and it's in motion right now in, in kind of a, a basic, a basic way. But what we would want to do is, we'd want to understand what the needs are of the different communities. We heard from Winters last night, some of the, the interests that they have in terms of community engagement and, and information that's being shared. We would do the same with, with West Sacramento as we, as we move forward with this. Of course, we have a, a better and more developed system through Valley Clean Energy and the other three jurisdictions that we serve. So we can actually communicate directly with our customers in those, in those communities. That would not necessarily be the case here in, in West Sacramento because we don't have the information and data from PG&E that we, that we have through Valley Clean Energy. So those would be questions that we would develop more fully within our phase two operations. It would probably, and to your question about timeline, phase two, we're anticipating will probably go from, you know, roughly this time, you know, mid to late October through probably early 2020. So that would be the phase where, you know, the bankruptcy court and, and the proceedings that are going on around that are being sort of laid out. And in the meantime, folks are hearing about it, there's articles in the newspaper, things are kind of floating around. We want to be in a position to be able to message effectively around this issue and, and point out why we think it's a good opportunity, what we think the benefits would be, what the risks are, you know, that we would be potentially taking on. So that would be the, kind of the messaging structure that we would be looking at. And of course, we would be working with anybody who's at the table to understand what the needs are and message, and message as effectively as we can. As we all know, in local government, sometimes it's really difficult to get people's attention. But, right now, with the energy question, what it is and, and some of the, the really tragic events that have happened over the past couple of years, there is obviously increased awareness and scrutiny around these types of issues. So, but in terms of the overall timeline, so that's phase, sort of phase two. Phase three would then, would then pick up at the point where we are able to identify whether or not we have traction within the bankruptcy proceeding, that this is actually a real, you know, a real possibility. That would probably occur later in, in sort of late Q1, early Q2 of, of 2020 because there is a deadline that the legislature has set for PG&E to come out of bankruptcy by, by summer of 2020 in order for them to be able to qualify for the, the pool of wildfire funds that are, that's being set up by the state. It was passed in legislation, I think it was 1054, this past session, which sets up, I think it's a $20 billion pool of funds that the investor-owned utilities can draw on. That's going to be funded, it looks like, through a continuation of the DWR fee that everybody pays right now, that will go into that pool of funds. So PG&E needs to get out of bankruptcy by June of 2020 to be able to qualify for those funds. That's part of what's pushing the bankruptcy proceeding at the velocity that it is right now. Because typically, in, in PG&E's last bankruptcy, it was a multi-year process. That's not really what's happening now. Bankruptcy was declared in late January in this case. It probably is going to be wrapped up within a year and a half, which is, for a bankruptcy of this size, is breakneck speed from what we're, from what we understand.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Well, I also want to, even, even this item on our agenda, the, the trade-off with, with premature engagement is creating expectations that we cannot meet. So we don't, we, we're nowhere near a plan to, to resolve this issue around PG&E or, or the sorts of things. So I just want to caution, at least from, from my perspective here, going out and telling folks, you know, we're, we're about to do this or that, we don't, we're nowhere near a decision like that. And there's a lot, there's already a lot of anxiety about the state of, about the state of the electrical system. So unless we're ready to do something, just going out and talking to people about it is not particularly helpful for us or for their, or for their own mental health, dealing with some of the real challenges that are out there right now. So. All right. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, just hearing some of the discussion tonight and then in consultation with the city attorney, I don't, I don't think we have the perfect solution here, but definitely one suggestion that we would make is a couple of changes to the resolution. Right now, given the fact that, that you're just able to review the actual agreements that you'd be signing on to, we make the recommendation to, if you go to the resolution 19 dash 100, under the now therefore be resolved section, we would strike number one and then number two would become number one. And we would change the language to, to authorize the mayor to approve and execute the, the agreements. That way, we get a chance to have a, a final look at the documents and at least have the opportunity to request changes if, if we, if we see the need for that. But at least it delegates the authority to the mayor to, to have that option. So those would be the suggested changes to the, the resolution, if you move forward.
All right. The other one, which is just as a technical matter, in the other cit, the other cities don't have a direct election system and so their system for appointments is different. And so the, the, while in those cities, because it's the council that make, directly makes appointments, appointment by resolution of the council is an appropriate action, I don't think that's correct here. So my suggestion is, would be to remove it from the resolution. I'm intending to make the, if we approve the action, to make the appointments tonight and seek the council's concurrence, but I don't want to-
We did have that conversation and this was a resolution that was provided to us and so this was a, yeah, this is one that I should have caught. We did talk about the fact that technically you make the appointments with council concurrence. And for council-level appointments, you typically make them directly. And it does not get council action on that, but.
And then one other point, in terms of these actual documents, we can, we can actually go back and, and put on the, the archives, the two, the two documents that were distributed tonight, so they'll be available to the public as well.
Thank you.
All right, great.
I think, Mr. Mayor, yeah, thank you. And considering this, it's, it's, I appreciate the, the presentation and the extensive answering, the hypotheticals and the, and the, just put the cards on the table wherever they may fall. And not knowing exactly what, how many, is it, you know, two decks of cards or half a deck of cards or, we don't know what we're playing with, right? So, and, but I, but I would say, at least for, for me, this has been a question that's been hanging around for me and with this council for a couple of years, even pre-November a year ago, the tragic events that have spurred this action. For me, I understand fully the opportunity and the, and the, the work that would have to be done to see if this is achievable, if it's implementable, if it's, all the things in between. But I also know there's other opportunities that we have been asking about and, or pining about. Because before the tragic wildfires, we were, we were frustrated with our provider, I think as many other communities were, which is why the CCA was formed in the first place. And we just haven't gotten there yet. And so, as the mayor said, I applaud our, our colleagues to the West, our sister cities who went ahead and, and did this. And, but I think that at the end, the opportunity now presents itself to, let's, let's get on board and figure out what we need to do. So a little bit of my decision around supporting this is around that, is understanding that, that these kind of opportunities are here. There's a real proceeding going on that will dictate some of our ability to control our own destiny, that we just, for the immediate term, I feel it's, it's in our best interest to, to kind of catch on to where the infrastructure and where the kind of thought has already gone on around this. I would say that probably if, if we were to do nothing and not support this, I think I would probably hear as much flack around, why, why didn't we do anything when we had the opportunity? I'm looking at our CEO of our local chamber, who has been somewhat quiet today, but I'm sure walking into, as I have before, the governmental affairs committee who, who have to contend with rates that, once they cross the river, are automatically 30% higher than across, than our Sacramento friends. And who face rate increases that, without real justification or investment, we see on the electrical side. It, it's, not doing anything is a choice we could make too, but I think we would probably held to, be held more accountable if we didn't. And that's my view today. I think there's a lot of questions that we need to get engaged on right away. To your point, come aboard and help me, help, help you solve them or cross those. And we're gonna, we're gonna need to. As you can see, we've thought about this and I know Winters has as well. And we have a lot of, a lot of interest here because we know our residents, our businesses that are here, depending on us, like for options, there just hasn't been a lot of what we thought were the ideal ones. And the reality is, it's a little bit for me, the, the realization that sometimes the best is the enemy of the good, right? Can you guard yourself from trying to get to the most ideal state of what it could be? What your energy provider and what, what it would be to getting, tagging on and what would be good enough in our community? And right now, honestly, that wouldn't take much in our community. So I'm supporting this with the, with, with the city manager's recommendations around this. I think it's a wonderful opportunity. I will offer advice as we move forward, either through board appointment or whatever the mayor wishes to guide us down this path. I would also, with it, I'll make a motion with it, ask city staff, I know it's already on our, on our priorities, but we will need to ensure that we have resources to make sure we, we really vet this out. Our community is, it's overdue and it's not in, or any fault of ours, but it's time. We need to invest in, in, in understanding our situation and providing energy in a better way. It's just for folks who have fixed incomes and want your rates increased, for businesses, again, that are competing with, with, with businesses across the river that already have a higher amount of, of energy, this time has come. And I appreciate the work you've done, you're, you are being principled in your answers around staying true to CCLA, but you're also being flexible to understand our situation and our questions. And that makes me hopeful. I understand clearly, having been on the Habitat Conservancy JPA, the pitfalls of kind of what, what this means in partnership, but there have been opportunities where we've actually made it work. And we just need to get to that point. And I think, I think there's opportunity to that. So I'll take that, Mr. Mayor, I'll enter that as a motion and I'm sure others may have comments or questions, but I want to make a motion.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, if I could?
Yes, sir.
I, I do want to point out one provision which I should have pointed out sooner, but there we are.
Should I withdraw my, should I withdraw my motion?
No, 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 it's good, it's good. Section, section 2.3.1, which is one of the provisions being added to the joint powers agreement, says in part, "The VCE is authorized to investigate the acquisition of local electrical distribution systems after completion of all appropriate due diligence and investigations and subject to final approval of the governing body of each member or associate member within whom, within whose jurisdictional boundaries the electrical distribution system is located, VCE may proceed to make offer and acquire the system." So it would have to come back to you for approval before VCE could acquire transmission facilities within West Sacramento.
Great. Sure. Thanks for, thanks for chugging that down. Councilmember Guerrero?
Yes, would we be able to find out how much we would potentially charge customers if we have to, you know, in the transition process, if there's an additional charge? if we have to, you know, in the transition process, if there's an additional charge, or, so that they have an idea that their rates are going to go down, up, or something? Would there be something in that analysis?
My understanding of the process is...
We're getting new equipment, by the way. My understanding of the process, and Mitch, feel free to jump in here if you want, but there's a difference between the potential rate PG&E can charge and the anticipated rate that the public utility would charge. I think it's too early to start to put out that sort of information until we do more analysis. But I think the idea here, one of the benefits of this process would be that rates would be more competitive than what they might be under PG&E long-term, given the potential rate increase we'd be looking at. Do you want to?
So we hope so, but, I mean, we just, we don't know. And we're not, we are not five weeks away from putting a note in the utility bill that we're about to switch service. And there are a lot of issues here. Cost is not the only one, obviously, you know, for our neighbors around Yolo that have had to deal with the outages, service, the system reliability and other things are in play as well. And so the whole purpose of the work that's being done right now on the offer, and then us joining, would be to really explore this. So we're, there's, it's not that somebody has the answer to all these questions, like what would the rates be, and when will it be, and all of that. And they're just not sharing it. It's, we're no, the whole point of this is to begin the work to develop that.
Yeah. And just to add one quick point there, is that the preliminary analysis has been completed, and so we would be able to share that information with associate members as well.
Okay. Thank you.
In the close session of the, yes.
That has more to do with the acquisition than, yeah.
And its implications, right?
Right.
Yeah. Okay. All right. So there's been a motion before, did we get a second already?
Second.
Okay. So we moved in seconded. Is there any, Councilmember Ledesma, Councilmember Guerrero?
Just to clarify with the changes that we outlined in the resolution.
Yes. Okay. All right. Then seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none, motion carries. Thank you. Thanks, Mitch. Council Calendar, Ms. Berlin?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. A couple of items coming up in the next couple of weeks that you might be interested in. On Friday, October 18th, Bayer Crop Science is doing their annual Community Service Day. It's going to be at Linden Park, starting at nine o'clock. Then on Saturday is the Mayor's Climate Commission Student Summit. That's going to be at River City High School from nine to one. Next Wednesday, October 23rd, is the YED Fall 2019 Leaders Summit. That's out at the Yolo County Office of Education at four o'clock, and the topic is youth development. And then finally, at the end of the month, October 30th, is the SACOG Regional Futures Forum. That's in Sacramento, starts at 8:30 a.m.
All right. Any questions on the calendar? All right. Non-city manager reports?
No report tonight. Thank you.
City attorney report. Staff direction for members of the council. We have no future agenda item requests, so is our motion to adjourn?
Nope. Move to adjourn.
Second. It's been moved by Councilmember Guerrero and seconded by Councilmember Ledesma. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, hearing none, motion carries. The meeting is adjourned.